To reconvene, so moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Brewer. I'll throw you the call roll.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Defense.
Here.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Dale.
Here.
Here.
Motion carried. I don't know four proof of minutes. I'll accept the motion, bro. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meetings from September 24th, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Diseski. Any questions? And a word.
Trustee Defense, yes. Trustee Todd, yes. Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Dale.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes. Motion carried. Number five public comment. Our question and comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of our village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or proposals. I hear all comments before we respond. Please state your name at the time of the call.
Frank Williams. First thing I'd like to do is congratulate you for your position. So proud that you're in that position, but it's one thing that I want to say to you. We are putting our life in your hands, all 10,000 of them. So do me a favor, take politics out of there. Do what you do with best business activities. Do what you have to do. Don't let politics get in the way of, don't let patriotism get in the way of. You'll put an end to rule and do it. That's what I'd like to see you do. And the second thing is, is that whoever is here on Facebook that always talks about my wife. I know my wife never done nothing to nobody. If you do stand right beside me and tell me this now. But you know what I do? I love you to do because as long as you're doing that, that makes me and her closer together. I love her now harder than I stood forty-five years ago. So whatever you got to say about her, God bless her, but you know that ain't gonna make this guy better, you know? And you know what? This is what she do. Next, every first Friday of every month, come watch what she do. She had church, she be beat. Last week she was dead over two hundred people, nothing but help her. So what I would like to say to whoever that person is, or that woman, or man, or whoever it is, keep doing it. Because God knows, you know, you make me love her more than ever, thank you know it. And for my closing remark, I'd like to say that good night, good luck, and may the good Lord take a liking to you.
My name is Shavala. I went to speak on the incident with our community center last Wednesday. There were multiple issues with what transpired. The police were reckless and they allowed them all to incite. I even made multiple attempts to speak with the chief, as well stopped in his office to speak with the mayor, left multiple messages, and no one has yet to return a phone call, send a message, write a letter, or leave a message to express the concerns that occurred last week or Wednesday. So I'm wondering if someone here tonight can let me know what's the protocol when a police is called? Two communities that are stating that there is some type of activity. And someone's supposed to set up a meeting in this area to be, make sure anyone stays, or could we just walk away, person, person out, or make a phone call, and then allow things to continue to escalate? When we stop by offices to speak to people in charge, are we supposed to be ignored and informed that although they're trying to cheat, they make it all together? So there's no realistic timeframe as to when anyone's supposed to be able to expect someone to even hear them, let alone a timeframe as to when a response is supposed to get.
I'm real anxious, as I stated earlier, I'll answer all questions at the end, so to not have a debate back and forth, or is that all that you have to do there? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rhanna.
How far would you say your name?
Rhanna. I recently just closed my home after a few events.
Could you use the mic, please? Could you speak in the mic a bit?
I don't.
There you go.
Alright, there you go. So I recently just bought a home out here. I would like to say I closed the 30th of August. When I came out here, I came to turn on my water, and I was informed that the people who sold the house had a list of obligations that they felt to do, so I wasn't even supposed to have the house. It wasn't ready, but I did. At the time, the lady right into time, she was there, and she was very kind to me because they were supposed to turn out the water at that time, they didn't. She allowed the people to come to the house and fix it up. Okay, fine, so a month goes by. Last week, not last week, about three weeks ago, I found out that the house doesn't have a meter. I don't understand how the house doesn't have a meter because it went through not only my inspection, but also through the village inspection. My inspector in catch it, when I went through my report, they have a picture of the meter, and it's in there. I don't understand what happened to it, but it wasn't there, and we had to come. My water was turned off. It was a thing of that, but the lady's in here helping me out, and she had the people come out and turn the water back on. So I just don't understand how so development, that's the name of them, was able to sell houses, and they're not being compliant with, you know, with people.
Bernadine Constance. For clarity, could you explain exactly how a surety bond protects the village, and if it protects the village? And the other thing is, I contacted you, and I don't remember exactly when, regarding a dangerous hole that was left, I guess because of watering. And I also, that day, I couldn't get through to the front desk, so I couldn't get to Public Works or to the village manager. But anyway, what I wanted to know was what was supposed to be done, because I observed that nothing is done, and I'm telling you, that hole is dangerous. I don't know how big it is, okay, but it's presently filled with water to a certain point, okay? If you step to the side, let's say you were rushing or running or something like that, you could fall in that hole. And I personally don't want to see that happen, so I'd like to tell people before it happens. The other thing I wanted to know. I lost my spot. Anyway, that'll get me out.
Judy Gessner. I have two things I would like to bring up. The first one is, Chief White recently put our canine in retirement, and I'd like to know what happened with that. I mean, we had that dog for a sense of puppy, and he just retired. And he drops out of the sky, or off the world, or how come we don't have anything for him? He was a member of our police department. We didn't get to even say goodbye to him. Secondly, our fire chief spent fifty-one years on the department, and I remember every one of them. And again, you don't tell us a damn thing. What's going on? Are we going to have goodbye to Al? And give an appreciation for what he's done for us so far? We need to know as residents what's happening in our town. And it's not giving us anything but after the fact, and we're not happy with that. We're not happy with the fact that there is no transparency. Please, see if you can correct that. Thanks.
Okay, the incident at the gym, I would like to discuss at this particular moment, but I will try, and if you get it free, I'll try to see if I can arrange a meeting with you, that person and the chief, to find out why I do not get involved in those types of incidents. That's something that the police department does, because I wasn't there to see what happened, so the police chief is in charge of this department, and I'm sure he has some answers for you. I'm sorry to hear that you're, the person that brought the house, had no meter in it, because that's been that have happened. It had to have a meter in it to be able to be sold. How the meter disappeared? I am aware that it had happened. That's something we're trying to find out, how that meter got out of that house, between the time it was sold and the time it was occupied. So we're trying to find out what happened with that. And as far as the the hole on Yates and 22nd Street, I did go by there, as I got to the village administrator by there yesterday and showed him the hole, and he knows about it. So hopefully we can get something, I've took around the whole village to find out about a lot of other different things, not just that hole. You see, there's a lot of things that need to be taken care of ASAP, so he was there, he did take notes, and hopefully we can address some of these issues before it gets too cold out, because when it gets cold out, it's hard to address a lot of the issues, and that's when we have a lot of watering breaks, when it actually gets cold out, that's when your watering breaks occur. And the canine retirement, I mean, we talked about this at the last meeting, and it was stated that it was health reasons why he was retired. I know there was going to be a buyback of the officer which would purchase the dogs for just a dollar, so the dog doesn't have to go to the the pound or anywhere else. So I'm sure that the officer did pass custody of the dog. We didn't have any ceremony for that, for that, but however, you didn't give me a chance to go further in my report as far as our fire chief that we've had here for fifty-one years. There's going to be something said about that in a few minutes, so that part, I'm sure that you'll understand.
What about the surety bond?
Ma'am, I explained that on, at the end of the meeting, ma'am, since you want to yell it out, but I
Well, I said the surety bond.
And usually I don't take
I asked you about the surety bond.
I usually don't
If you're going to answer all the questions, then you need to answer all the questions now. Come on, you gotta be fair. I asked you, could you explain what a surety bond was, and you told me ignore that.
Are you thrilled?
Yes.
Okay, I will answer you at the end. I can need to show you, because obviously I explained it to you, so I need to show you and write it, so you can have something to take with you now. Explained it to you, I've done it several times. I'm going to give you a piece of paper that explains what a surety bond is, so we'll have it in writing down. Report of officers. My report, first, the mayor's report. Do have a letter here from our chief, Al Starbrayden, and I'd like to read it. And it states, "Mayor urges, 'After fifty years of service and sacrifice to the village, it is time that I retire from the Salt Village Fire Department effective December 1st, 2019, and enjoy time with family and friends. Over the years through hard work and dedication, I was able to rise through ranks and ultimately receive appointment to serve as your fire chief in 2009. The department has experienced significant change and growth over the years. And I am proud to have led the many men and women who sacrificed their time and talents to make the department what it is today. Collectively, we have made a difference in the lives of countless individuals and families. Whenever a car accident, house fire, or medical emergency, the department has always been there to ease the pain and suffering of those in need, turning their worst days into one of their best. I would like to thank all those who I've served with over the years in the fire department, as well as ESTA, the police department, and Public Works, and the village administration for your support over the years. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't give a special thank to my wife, Arlene, who stood by my side all these years as I missed birthdays, anniversaries, and other holidays, as I ran out the door to help her. I couldn't have achieved all that I have without her love and support. In closing, I know that these are difficult challenges for the village. I sincerely hope that the village board can come together, put the community first above all else, and provide the fire department with the resources they need to continue to deliver our citizens the high-quality professional services that they deserve. Sincerely, Al G. Starbrayden, Fire Chief." I tried to, everything I could, besides subpoenaing him here, to get him to come, and he still wouldn't come, so hopefully we can do something, I don't know what we do at the fire station, if he'll come there, but I tried to get him to come here today, but in fact, we know I, he was threatened to drag him, but that wouldn't look right if I dragged him, so. So I just want to read a proclamation that was, that he's supposed to have, he's supposed to have been here to hear, but I just want to put it on record, and the proclamation goes as follows. Whereas Al, Al Starbrayden began his distinguished career with the Salt Village Fire Department on March 8th, 1969, whereas Starbrayden was an outstanding firefighter and was promoted to lieutenant on October 19th, 1907. Starbrayden continued to exhibit motivation to learn and enhance his ability to serve to a greater capacity by acquiring certificate certifications as firefighter two, fire service instructor, fire officer one provisional, hazmat operation, and technical rescue winner. He taught many classes to the men and women who served Salt Village as firefighters, helping them, helping them to receive their certification. Whereas Starbrayden continued to show his leadership ability and was promoted to captain on May 25th, 1976, and at that time was given command of the Fire Prevention Bureau, which handled fire inspections and public education. Chief Starbrayden was promoted to assistant chief on October 23rd, 1979, and served as such until his promotion to deputy chief on November 1st, 1992, and finally fire chief on October 13th, 2009. Chief Starbrayden asked to pause service in 2012, certainly short period of time, and endure role of police and fire chief. Whereas Chief Starbrayden, through his fifty-one years, has probably, has probably to serve seven of those of Salt Village's eight mayors through the tenure of three fire chiefs, Leroy Hawkins, 1969 to 1992, Travis Burnhill, 1992 to 2002, and Christopher Sewell, 2002 to 2009. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the board of trustees of the village of Salt Village, Cook County, that we recognize fifty-one years of exemplary service to the Salt Village Fire Department too, and to those people of Salt Village that Al Starbrayden has provided. And be it further proclaimed that the village board recognizes the dedication and commitment that Al Starbrayden has put forth during his fifty-one years serving the community and residence of Salt Village, and wish him Godspeed in his retirement. And be it further proclaimed that the village board is hereby requested distributing a certified copy of this proclamation to Al Starbrayden, and that he be strung upon the record from the village of Salt Village, dedicated as twenty-sixth day of November, 2019. Derek Burgess, Mayor, Marv McCamber, Thorpe, District. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to accept my recommendation for the appointment of Mr. Stephen Barrett as fire chief. So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee, I'll just answer. Any questions? And a word.
We get a chance, miss?
I said, is there any question?
Yes, I gave you an opportunity. I'd like to receive it. First of all, I would like to congratulate Fire Chief Starbrayden on his well-deserved retirement. Not many firefighters can say that they helped every ranking of the fire department while ending fifty years of service as fire chief. Chief Starbrayden, your years of service is commendable and very much appreciated. As far as the appointment before us today, the mayor has the right to appoint the incoming fire chief with the advice and consent of the board. If consent is not given, the mayor has the right to appoint someone every thirty days. I'd like to go on record that the mayor never asked for the advice of the board with regards to this appointment. Neither was the job posted, so other ranking officers, both inside and outside of our department, could be given an opportunity to apply, such as the current assistant chief, who has also helped every ranking department, but will not be afforded the opportunity to reach the distinction of Chief Starbrayden. When the mayor was asked why the board was not included in the appointment process, and why the position was not posted, the board was told that he felt that he had the best man for the job. The fire department has had many issues lately, including the need to hire reward paid, I call firefighters, and a lack of morale. After speaking with several of the firefighters, it seems we do agree on one major item. It is the safety of our residents, as well as the safety of our men and women who run into the fire while we run out. This should be the first and foremost in our decision as we attempt to rebuild the department. Three other firefighters have applied for this appointment but will not receive the opportunity to be considered, including the assistant chief who has forty-eight years of experience under his belt. I do wish Stephen Barrett well in the position of fire chief, as he takes on the daunting task of rebuilding our fire department. I pray for the health and well-being of each and every one of our firefighters as they continue to perform their duties. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Dale?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Saying.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Defense?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes. Motion is carried. At this time, I would like to have, here, just come up and get sworn in by the clerk. I think your wife has the bible, as you can hold.
Do thou always swear that I will faithfully and faithfully discharge the duties assigned and perform all the duties incumbent by me as fire chief? Okay, I'll break it up, I'm sorry. Okay. I will discharge the duties assigned and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as fire chief for the village of Salt Village. I will obey and be bound by the laws and ordinances which are now or may be established by the village of Salt Village. And I, Stephen Barrett, bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the Charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Salt Village. So long as I shall be chief of Salt Village Fire Department, according to the best provided bill of duty. So help me God.
At this time, I would like the assistant chief to tend this chief badge on to our chief there. Um, next item. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation for the approval of the appointment of the volunteer boy as community development director.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Bell. Any questions?
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Defense?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes. Motion is carried. Okay, I know that there's a lot of people in the audience today, firefighters from all over, fire chiefs from all over. That's a great testimony, and I know that, you know, I don't want to hold up anyone, so I would like at this time that we take a moment, that those that wanted to take a picture with the new chief, just come right up here, and especially the fire chiefs, because I've had several of them. uh, especially the fire chiefs, because I've had several of them, to give a recommendation. So if you guys want to take a picture with it, so, and if you choose that you want to, you know, stay for the rest of the evening, fine, if not there, we can understand, so, if you guys want to come up, present your new, uh, fire department, and I'm sorry, that's your new, your fire department.
You didn't get a hand?
You get plenty of that.
Congratulations.
Okay, if you can back over please. If you want to, uh, traverse the hallway and carry it?
Yes.
Just across the hallway. Um, the motion is continued, uh, the next item is the, uh, village board's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things that I would like to report on. The first one is community partnership, and where community partnership is concerned, there are two items to address there. The first one is to thank all of the volunteers who showed up and showed out our last Saturday when we had our very first Thanksgiving celebration. The num- the very first, um, the number of our residents who showed were quite immense, and it was such a lovely, lovely day. But at some point in time, we had more volunteers than we had residents, and, uh, we were like, okay, we're giving a party and nobody's coming, but then when they came, they came, and believe me, we ate very well, they ate very well, so I just would like to thank everybody who was there and who participated. And now, where the community partnership is concerned also, on the table where the resources are, the list for the food drive can be located, because on December twenty-first, we will have our third annual holiday cheer, where we will be giving out food baskets to any of our residents, but right now, we are doing the stage where we are collecting. So there will be baskets in the foyer for the next couple of weeks, so I'm going to ask that each and every group, please be charitable and make donations. Other people that will be collecting would be a number of our schools, as well as a number of our churches, so please join in as well, and know that you are more than welcome to attend on December the twenty-first. The next thing I want to talk to you about is the United States Census. We are moving right along in terms of planning our strategies for how we're going to actually reach our underserved population, I'm sorry, that's underrepresented population, and our next planning meeting will be December the fourth, right here at three o'clock, so if anyone would like to be on that committee, it's open to any and everyone. On that day also, we will be continuing to plan the holiday cheer. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. Village administrator, uh, Mr. Preston Lee.
Good evening, everyone, uh, just a brief update, so I'm continuing to work on trying to find some, um, good digital archive or tools that we can use for better engagement with our systems, as well as our, um, operations and for more transparency, as well as trying to secure some funds, uh, working with our CMAP coordinator and village planner, uh, Ms. Maggie with our STP program to see if we can get some more funds, and then also I had a meeting, uh, recently with our congresswoman for this district, um, about also some federal initiatives, so that's all I have to check in today, thank you.
Village engineer, Mr. Tim Tarny?
Thank you, Mayor. I will present an update on the logistics center phase one study. Topographical survey has been completed, we have to get CN railroad authorization and training, plus utilized flaggers for the railroad survey. We have processed the total and drafted it. We are in the process of finalizing the preferred, proposed railroad alignment. We are also verifying profile audations for floodplain and culvert hydraulics. We will then prepare preliminary track plans and meet with CN. We have had bi-weekly phone conferences with Maggie Jar, village planner, Maggie has been helping to coordinate with property owners and to keep them updated. Project is currently on schedule, target study completion date is November twenty-twenty. Completion date required by the county's intergovernmental agreement is June twenty-twenty-one, so we are well ahead of that deadline. That concludes my report, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Fire chief, uh, Stephen Barrett?
I thought I was in church for a second, I was gonna say amen, but, uh, I get confused sometimes. I thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fire department responded to twenty-five calls for service, uh, for the period of November seventh through November twenty-second. There were no true major incidents. Um, we still have, uh, a ton of paint left for distribution at the station, and, uh, fire personnel will be there until six P M. daily, so if anybody would like to still come get some paint, there's still some left. Also, over the weekend, the fire association, uh, gave out forty turkeys and, uh, with baskets to, uh, our village residents, uh, just random resident, uh, residents, uh, just to show them that, uh, the village still love them and that the fire department love them as well. I always believe that it's, it's good to give back. Finally, we'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and we'd like to remind not to leave any cooking devices unattended. And that concludes my report, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I probably should have said this first, but I, I'd like to thank everybody, um, seriously, um, from the deepest, and I say this, uh, I'm a very jovial person and I'm gonna be who I am, so I thank everybody from the deepest of the comforts of my belly on, uh, this opportunity to help move our department in the correct way, in the proper way, and, uh, I'm gonna do the best that I can, I'm not per- uh, perfect, I'm not even a woman that's perfect as name is being described, so thank you.
Police department, Chief Malcolm White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, village board. This past Thursday, uh, November twenty-first, uh, we had a chat with the chief available, uh, our guest speaker was the administrative supervisor for Cal Town, uh, also had, uh, any of the attendees shown up, uh, they would also found out about the preparation of the resolution or proclamation for our cannon officer, which is underway right now, um, and it will be on the agenda for the, uh, for the board, just as he, just as other proclamations are, uh, put together as well. Actually, I mentioned that, I think, a few weeks ago, that there was a proclamation that was preparing for the cannon, so, uh, he has not been forgotten. Um, also, uh, another thing that we normally address and chat with the chief, uh, when we address any issues that we might have, where people believe that the police department has certain shortcomings, uh, there is a protocol, there's a point protocol, uh, we like to stick within the chain of command, uh, normally it would start with going and asking for the watch commander or the sergeant, at which time to request a contact, and then from there, it'll be, uh, uh, investigation, whether formal or informal, uh, should be reviewed by us, so, uh, anyone who needs to have a discussion with me, I am here after the meeting, uh, you can stop in, we have been quite busy today, uh, I'll address that in a minute, but I am available, um, in the back room for any of the meetings. So, our, uh, normal, uh, board report, uh, between the period of, uh, November twelfth and the day, the police department, uh, responded to, uh, four hundred and twelve calls for service, uh, during that same time period, we made nineteen arrests, um, some of you might have noticed, uh, earlier, that, uh, the Walgreens, uh, was closed during the, uh, earlier portion of the day, um, of course, I put out a press release which we forwarded to the, uh, village board, but so that you get the real news as opposed to whatever people read on social media, I will read it here, um, at approximately nine o'clock, Saw Village Police, nine o'clock A.M., Saw Village Police responded to a gunshot victim in front of Walgreens, uh, uh, Torrance and Saw Trail. The victim was a male Hispanic in the early twenties, he was transported to St. Martin's Hospital in Dyer, Indiana, where he was pronounced. The victim is not from the South suburban area, which means he is not local, and the incident appears, uh, to be isolated, um, and it was not random. Uh, the, our investigating officers are continuing to interview witnesses, uh, we are also being assisted by the Major Crimes Task Force, um, as you can see by the parking lot being so full when the guests came in. Uh, again, I will be available, um, towards the latter part of this, uh, meeting, in the back of the room, for whatever reason someone wants to have a discussion. Uh, I do have an open door policy, but I am a working chief, which means that sometimes I am on the street, sometimes I am addressing other issues, uh, but again, I do have an open door policy. Uh, Mr. Mayor, village board, that concludes, that completes my report.
Thank you. Uh, community development, Director Tanya McFoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, board of trustees, madam clerk, and the citizens of Saw Village. I am, um, completely honored to serve you guys as the director of community development. Um, my report starts with, uh, the number of permits that were issued this month, thirty permits have been issued, fifty-five code enforcement tickets have been issued as well. Um, I'm also going to introduce something similar to chat with the chief, is talk to Tanya Tuesdays, so every second Tuesday at ten o'clock, I would love to have you guys come out and be involved in developing the community you want to see, so that's what we can talk about and try to implement some of the things that we discussed around that time. That concludes my report, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Reports of trustees, standing committees, and colleagues, public safety committee trustee, Mary Bell.
Thank you, Mary. Today we had our, is it on? Today we had our safety meeting for this month, we had a fire station, a little walkroom, everything seems to be in good shape there. The next meeting will be on the, the seventeenth of December, here in the rotunda, at eleven A.M. I'd like to give this to Stephen Barrett on his promotion. And, uh, you know, I'll train you, I'll be there. Thank you, those are important, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public service committee, trustee Bernie Drew.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, of course, I made my appointment for Friday at ten o'clock, Mr. Barrett, before you leave. Mr. Barrett, it's Friday, this is a holiday, Thursday, Friday, it's a Wednesday.
That's why you made the appointment.
Yeah, I made the appointment, he said he had one. But, uh, to be serious about it, the ordinance, uh, ordinance for security, for the security bond, and also for the, uh, treasure, and with to the, uh, attorney last week in the committee meeting, so as soon as that ordinance comes back, we're gonna approve it or not approve it, and we'll let you know and give you some additional information about it. Also, ordinance has been around for a while for rehab water, a young lady came and asked about rehab water, now there's a dispute there, and we talked to, um, uh, again with, uh, Mr. Finch and Cynthia, and also, uh, Tanya, I should call her Ms. McFoy, about the rehab water and, uh, uh, thing about, I think, uh, Sharon, you got to jump in on this one?
Use the mic, please.
We are working on getting all that straightened out, uh, we gotta work on the committee, uh, Cynthia. Cynthia and myself have worked on rehab car and water, and, uh, Sherry and, uh, Tyler will probably use rest for that. So, just to let you know, the ordinance is in the, in the works, and it's going to be reviewed, uh, Lisa Finch has it, so I think we knew that, and we'll bring it back to order there, and see if we could, uh, uh, get it passed, and that's the end of my file.
Budget and finance committee, trustee Roger Brett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I know co- with the boss that I would have a packet for you guys, um, I'm still waiting on feedback, honestly, um, I do have to have my feedback, I still need to rest, I'll give you five cents of you guys, um, so therefore, hopefully, and this will get to you, review in two weeks, or whatever the committee meeting is, hopefully something we can pass, uh, at the beginning of the year next year, uh, in January, and also I have another policy I have to present here as well, at the same time, uh, that will be, that much discussion about it on paper. Um, you know, last week we did a bunch of actuals, um, we saw that some departments that, you know, the expenses for some of the long items, uh, exceeded where we should be, so, I'm pretty sure, well, I know for a fact that the, uh, village administrator and the finance director are working with the department heads to kind of, uh, see exactly what they can do to kind of alleviate some of the expenses that they're seeing so far, uh, so hopefully, you know, they can come back to us and say, hey, we should cut this, or, you know, come back to the board, we need to amend this or this, um, so hopefully more to come on the budget, I know that Mr. Finch does have like a, uh, a big award sometime in like the early January for December, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, sometime in late, early December for November, and, uh, hopefully we can see where we stand at that point in time, and that's all we have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Housing and Government Relations Committee, trustee Sherry Jimmicky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I submitted the two ordinances to trustee Todd's committee for, um, house inspections for sale and for rental. Um, also, the next housing meeting is going to be December eleventh at seven o'clock here in the Rotunda, and I would wish to, um, I might wish all the residents a happy Thanksgiving, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Orders to review, Mr. Mayor, trustee left to Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the next, um, ordinance review committee meeting will be December ninth at six p.m. here in the Rotunda, and then we will review your ordinances, trustees just as well, and I also would like to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Public Events Committee, trustee David Galloway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we had this, uh, weekend, we had the vendor craft there at the senior center, uh, we had at least fifteen vendors, uh, we had, that were represented, uh, by a number of people. I wish the event could have been more well attended, but I think part of the problem with that is communication, I did ask for it to be placed on the marquee, but unfortunately, it was not placed on the marquee, I would hope that people would possibly join my Facebook page for the Public Events Committee, which is South Village Public Events Committee on Facebook, that way you can find out the events that we're having, we tried to have at least one event per month, and what we're not going to meet in the month of November, so you will find out what the December event is at the beginning of next, the next month when we, when we come back and meet as a committee. I would like to wish everybody here, from my family to yours, a great, happy, wonderful, blessed Thanksgiving, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Reports for committees and commissions, senior advisory council, Chairman Hibbert Farmer.
Thanks, Mayor, uh, for your trustee. Our next meeting for the senior advisory council is December twelfth, two thousand nineteen, five p.m., all are welcome, also, come out and join our seniors for breakfast bingo every second of fourth Friday, from eleven a.m. to twelve p.m. Uh, also, later season of the fun is in Compton, and Representative Havana will be doing their last, uh, seminar on Monday, December second, here in the senior center at ten a.m., uh, be sure to come out and get all your personal assets and all your breakfasts. Also, seniors, don't forget game night, every person turns Friday, come for card games, such as vehicles and other games, from six a.m. to ten p.m. Also, committee members will be teaching vehicles from six a.m. to seven p.m. every person turns Friday, for those who don't know how to play. Also, senior center is, uh, closed, um, for really, uh, the chief, he watches for twenty-eight hours, but it's a homicide investigation, so no one's allowed, uh, anyone that comes to senior center during the day, music, uh, the day room, to read or watch TV, uh, he's at forty-eight hours, so he'll let me know when the senior center is available again, and just to say on behalf of, uh, the senior advisory council, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Um, our next item is the business, I will entertain a motion to approve payroll accounts payable in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars sixty-two cents. It was moved by trustee Brewer, seconded by trustee Williams, any questions?
Trustee Jensen, yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Bryan?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to approve an ordinance of ending chapter ten, animal control of the village of South Village, unless it's called.
So moved, second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee, does that see any questions? Matter of course.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Bryan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, before we adjourn, I just want to make sure everyone knows that, uh, Village Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday, so after tomorrow, uh, Village Hall will be open again next, like my name, that I like to wish each one of you and your family, a happy Thanksgiving, a safe Thanksgiving, travel safely, and enjoy the festivities that you're going to go to. At this time, I ask for a motion to adjourn, it was moved by trustee Brewer, seconded by trustee Bell, all in favor.